Eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. And we are live.
Okay, I'll call to order the planning commission meeting of twelfth, January twenty twenty-three. This virtual meeting is compliant with the Ralph and Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill number three sixty-one, effective September sixteen, twenty twenty-one, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public staff and planning commissioners while allowing for public participation. The planning commission meeting is being broadcast on Comcast channel twenty-seven and the city's YouTube channel at W W YouTube dot com Brisbane, C A. The agenda materials may be viewed online at W W Brisbane, C A dot org backslash meetings. All written comments provided before two P M. of the day of the meeting have already been provided to the commission and available for public inspection at the front lobby in City Hall and online at W W Brisbane, C A. Dot org slash meetings. Any writings received after the agenda has been posted, but after two P M. of the day of the meeting will be available online at the start of the meeting. At W W Brisbane, C A dot org backslash meetings, at which time the materials will be distributed to the commission. For those who did not provide written comments, a call-in telephone number was provided on the agenda, which can be viewed online at W W Brisbane, C A dot org backslash meetings. The phone number and instructions will also be provided during the meeting. Participants in the Zoom webinar may make their comments through Zoom. Please note that Zoom participants will only be able to address the commission verbally. I will announce time limits for public comment during a particular item. Uh, staff, may I have a roll call?
Commissioner Funka?
Present.
Commissioner Gooding?
Present.
Commissioner Lau?
Present.
Commissioner Sai Song?
Here.
The record show Commissioner Patel is absent.
Um, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, can I have a voice vote, please, staff?
Commissioner Funka?
Aye.
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Sai Song?
Aye.
Uh, adoption of the agenda passes with four ayes. So coming to the consent calendar, are there any members of the public or any commissions who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Um, any Zoom participants who want to pull an item from the consent calendar may raise their hands. Uh, or press nine on the phone if they have called in. And staff will start a timer for thirty seconds. Uh, to allow members of the public to pull an item if they wish to do so.
Um, I had started the thirty-second clock. Um, when you had opened the item and I posted the number on the screen.
Great, thank you.
And thirty seconds has elapsed.
Oh, fantastic. Um, I assume that there are no commissioners who want to pull an item from the consent calendar. Uh, has anyone raised their hands or called in? Okay. Um. Uh, in that case, uh, can I have a motion, please, to adopt the consent counter?
So moved.
And a second.
Um, can we have a um, voice vote, please?
Commissioner Funka?
Aye.
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Sai Song?
Aye.
Great, the motion passes with uh, four ayes. Okay, coming to oral communications. I guess this is an opportunity for the public to call in with oral communications. Um, this call and numbers displayed on the screen and Zoom participants may raise their hand if they wish to address the commission. And a timer has been started or will start for.
A timer has started for sixty seconds.
Great. Uh, and while this is running, uh, uh, we should acknowledge the written communications that have been uh, received, um. Uh, a couple from Dana Dilworth regarding the housing elements and then also received some fees back, feedback from, um. Um, who was it from? Maybe you can help me remember. I did read it, it was very detailed from the Housing Coalition.
Housing Leadership Council.
Housing Leadership Council, which received some, um, some feedback from uh, from them as well regarding, um, our housing element. Uh, did we receive any additional communications since then apart from the ones you forwarded already?
Nothing further.
Okay, sixty seconds has elapsed.
And has anyone indicated that they want to address the commission?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, uh, in that case, I think it's time to move on to the uh, to the agenda and to new business. And uh, I'll ask staff for presentation on the uh, the main topic for the evening.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, tonight's meeting is to provide a public hearing and planning commission review on adoption of the draft twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element and self-certification of the elements' compliance with state law. And this is to uh, for the planning commission to provide a recommendation to city council. By way of background, the draft housing element was published on August eighth, and yet that kicked off the formal thirty-day public comment period as required by state law. On August twenty-fifth, the planning commission held a public hearing and provided a recommendation to city council to submit the draft housing element to the Department of Housing and Community Development, or H C D. City council then held a public hearing on October sixth and directed the staff to submit the draft to H C D. for an initial ninety-day re- review period. H C D. provided red, written comments on the elements' compliance with state housing element law on January fourth, so just last, uh, last week. As we detailed in the agenda report for tonight, per state law, cities in the Bay Area have until January thirty-first of this year plus a hundred and twenty-day grace period, which puts us to May thirty-first to adopt an element. And for that adopted element to be certified as compliant with state law by H C D. City staff initially anticipated using the grace period to allow for review of H C D. comments and provide responses. And then to hold the necessary public hearings for adoption of an updated version of the housing element. However, recent interpretation of state law by H C D. staff suggests that the city must adopt a compliant housing element by January thirty-first without regard for the hundred and twenty-day grace period. Given that interpretation, failure to adopt the element by the deadline would lead the city's housing element out of compliance with state law and expose the city to the so-called builder's remedy, which is essentially housing developers who comply with certain affordability standards may proceed with their projects without regard to local zoning requirements. With that in mind, and in an effort to limit risk to the city, the housing element adoption process is being accelerated beginning with tonight's public hearing to provide a recommendation to city council to self-certify and adopt the housing element as presently drafted. To make that recommendation, the planning commission must find that the element complies with state law. A compliance checklist was provided in appendix F of the housing element. As I mentioned, H C D. provided comments to the city on Janu- January fourth, and it outlined several topic areas for which H C D. believes the city must provide more analysis and or evidence to show how the element fully complies uh, with state law to H C D. satisfaction. Planning staff will be meeting with H C D. staff and will be providing responses to their requests on the specific items raised to demonstrate compliance. Given the timing and that this is an ongoing conversation with H C D. to clarify items in housing element, our intent is not to discuss all of H C D.'s comments tonight, but they will be addressed ultimately eat in detail with city council when this goes forward. Staff sees their comments as largely clarification of existing content and would not preclude self-certification of the element. However, if the commission has specific questions regarding their comments, we'd be happy to answer them as best we can. Note, we expect the adopted element will require a subsequent amended amendment following H C D.'s review of the city's response. Uh, such an amendment would be included as in a revised draft element made available for public review and comment prior to public hearings at the, at both the planning commission and city council. And I'll note at this point, there was a mention in the agenda report about language to that effect in the resolution, which um, wasn't actually in the resolution, essentially that it it recognizes that amendments may come forward, but we could add that in. And so finally, I'll note that the draft resolution also includes the finding that the adoption of the housing element is exempt under SEQA in the SEQA sections that are specified in the resolution. Since the zoning that's specified is already addressed through the general plan amendment for the Baylands and the associated E I R. addendum. And other residential and mixed-use districts are already designated for residential development in the city's general plan and existing zoning. So in closing, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to city council self-certification and adoption of the draft twenty twenty-three to thirty-one housing element. The adoption of resolution twenty twenty-two, G P A one A. And if you have questions, we're, um. I'll answer them or Julia, John, whoever it uh, goes to, happy to answer what you may have.
Great, thank you very much. Um, any questions from any of the commissioners? I'll just go around the, the clock as I see it. Commissioner Gooding?
Uh, no, I, I think, um, I alluded earlier before we, on the record about, about, um, providing something in the resolution about, um, our ability to, or the staff's ability to propose amendments and changes to the, um, to the process as would result from their meetings with, with H C D. And I'm not sure it's in the, the resolution is currently worded, so we should deal with that at some point.
Correct, so we could add that language into the resolution.
That's Commissioner Sai Song?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
And finally, Commissioner Lau?
Uh, no questions and appreciate the staff's work on this. Um, on the draft and the proposal.
Um, I am curious if you could just clarify what the, um, what the process is for ensuring sort of transparency and, uh, and public feedback. I think you mentioned that that would be incorporated as you talked to H C D. and you trying to address their comments, that there would be additional opportunity for public comment. Um, and I wonder what, what you think the role of that would be. I, I guess my feeling is that the, the housing element before it was sent out was already, it already gone through a period of public comment, so I think it represented the best recommendation and all the feedback that we got during that process, and it was approved by the city council. So I assume that any additional public feedback would, would relate only to amendments that you come up with in your discussions with the H C D. Um, so is that my perception of that correct? And, and then I'd like to hear what, what will be the public announcement about? This is what's happening. This is your window for additional comment and things like that.
Right, so we have, um, we're looking at tentatively, I think it was, uh, uh, February second, if I have that date correct, of, of possibly going to uh, city council. So their first meeting, their first regular meeting in, in February. And any new public comments that are received, as well as what you've received, just with, uh, since the notice went out for this hearing, um, those will be passed forward to city council. And, and of course, the public can make any comments that they uh, choose and, and will be, uh, responsive to those, um. And as, as well as once we come back with any, um, addendum to the housing element following, you know, this process as it plays out with H C D., um, we'll have additional public notices that will go out for planning commission first and then city council. And then again, that's yet another opportunity for the public to weigh in and make comments. And so, um, lots of opportunity there for public comment and, and we'll consider any of those comments, whether they're comments that we've heard before or if something new or to be raised.
Yeah. Any, will, will there be any, uh, like special announcement for those opportunities? I think what you've outlined is, is great, you know? People, interested citizens, pay attention to the agenda of the planning commission and the city council. Um, but when we were first drafting the housing element, I think there were announcements that went out and say, hey, here's a link, you provided your feedback and things like that. So, um, if there, if there's no plan to do that, I, I think that's fine, because we've been through that process already, but is it just by paying attention to the agendas?
Uh, we actually are using our other social media to blast out information and we have a uh, extensive email list as well, and so we are pushing that information out, so it's not just the the standard posting places or the city's website, but if, you know, anybody who's shown an interest in wanting to be on the um, the email list or getting our social media, those kind of things, we're, we're putting it out there, so.
Okay.
And at the star, um, February star um, for potential council adoption dates, we'll have, um, an article there. We missed the cutoff for January due to timing issues, but yeah, we, we continue to use every avenue at our fingertips for pushing information out there.
Okay. All right, I think that's fine. I just, it's just, I guess, to avoid the perception there's anything like, you know, going on behind the scenes or something. I don't think that there, that that perception would be justified. But, um, but I, I think you've, you've done, you'll do your diligence on that. It sounds fine to me. So I, I have no additional questions. Um, anything else from any of the other commissioners? If not, I, I think is this the time for me to ask for a motion on this topic?
No, you have to open the public hearing.
Open.
And you can just, okay, and I'll go ahead and share the call and information. Um, and we already have a hand raised in the Zoom. Um, so here's the information on the screen for folks watching at home. You can call. Um, I have a hand raise from a call-in number, so I'm gonna, um, allow that person to talk. And, um, so caller, you can press star six to unmute.
Hello, uh, my name's Brian Shields. I'm a field rep for Carpenter's Local Two Seventeen, uh, covering San Mateo County. Uh, I appreciate everything that you just said about public comment, and, uh, and so I'll just try to keep this brief, um. Uh, I feel and, and as these housing elements keep rolling out, that it's incredibly important, and we feel as the union that it's incredibly important that labor standards be attached to it. We're providing for developers to, uh, build, you know, sometimes thousands of houses in a single city and, uh, and without labor standards, typically the way that those get built is by, um, by exploiting the workforce. Um, when I'm not speaking on planning commission meetings or city council meetings or, or doing the various other things, I'm out trying to talk with the folks that are working on these job sites. And they're commuting in from Modesto, Salinas, uh, uh, you know, Fresno, uh, for twenty-five dollars an hour to twenty-eight dollars an hour. And, uh, left, right, and center, we find wage violations where people aren't paid the correct wage, they're not paid the wage that they said they were gonna be paid. They're not even paid to the California standard because they provide their own tools. But they do not, uh, get the double minimum wage, which Wage Order sixteen, like California law says they, they should be paid, which now, as of January first, is thirty-one dollars an hour. So, uh, it's important that, uh, as a policy moving forward, uh, that this gets implemented, especially with, uh, with the allocation of, of areas and, uh, units of housing to be built. Uh, thank you for your time and, uh, hope you have a good evening.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. Any other hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised in the Zoom. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and just start the two-minute timer.
Okay.
Um, so I've started a two-minute timer, so two-minute warning.
Okay. I see here that it's your time to acknowledge any written communications, but I, I think we already did that at the top of the agenda, right?
Yeah. A one-minute warning. Thirty seconds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Two minutes has elapsed. I don't see any additional hands raised.
Julia, there was a question. Yeah, co- comment in the chat, I believe, or the.
Yeah, there's a comment in the Q and A. I can read it. For the record, this person, Carmen G. says, if this project was discussed before, doesn't seem it's important. Okay.
So does this start the clock for the thirty-second clock for closing the public comment period?
Uh, sure, uh.
I don't know if we need additional thirty seconds, but, um.
I defer to the director. I thought we had a two-minute. Okay. Would, would you like me to do an additional thirty seconds on the clock, John?
I defer to the commission. The, the, normally the two minutes was for public comment.
That's what I thought.
If you want to extend it, that's, that the commission's prerogative. Otherwise, you can.
I don't think. I think it's fine to not add another thirty seconds to that, so.
Okay.
In that case, may I have a motion, please, to close the public comment?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second, please.
Second.
And may I have a voice vote?
Commissioner Funka?
Aye.
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Sai Song?
Aye.
Thank you very much that, uh, the, uh, the motion to close the public hearing, uh, passes by four votes. Um. I guess that kicks off the deliberations period. Um. Any additional observations from any of the commissioners, Commissioner Gooding?
I, I would just like to, to commend the staff. This, this involves an enormous amount of work over the last, last numerous months and, and anybody who's read the, the housing element from stem to stern realizes how much work goes into it, and I just want to thank them for it. Um, I think the, the H C D. may, may have their, their quibbles and and some details they want to iron it out, but, um, I'm confident that will get worked out pretty easily, so. So thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to echo that. I think, I know that it was a huge amount of work. Um. I wonder, this interpretation, that it's thirty days and the grace period, where did that come from? And is that a common interpretation of all the cities reach the same conclusion?
Yes, cities, cities across our region are largely doing the same action of self-certifying. This is a, it's a new interpretation that we have not seen in past housing elements, essentially taking away the hundred and twenty-day grace period for, for this portion of the process.
The grace period does still apply in one provision, um, just probably one we're more interested in, which is that we would have three years to accomplish any rezoning that's necessary versus one. So that, that still is, um, we still have until the grace period for, uh, for that to apply. But yeah, the whole builder's remedy, um, that, that's what's really, um, compelling jurisdictions, like Ken said, across the Bay Area throughout San Mateo County to accelerate.
But I have one, one quick question or, or comment, whatever. Um, does H C D. understand that, that this accelerates or sort of, you know, compresses the process so that they, they are open to, to further discussion from, from each of the the planning staffs of all the various cities to, to fine-tune pursuant to their comments? I mean, is that, do they, do they realize that's what they're doing?
I I think they do, and they are, they will continue to work with the city, because they, they want to see um, the housing elements that they recognize as being um, compliant, that they can certify.
There's no, I guess, yeah, to flip it, there's no reason that we see H C D. would, would not work with cities. H C D.'s mission is to work with cities throughout, frankly, throughout the entire element planning cycle, um, to make sure elements continue to be in compliance with state law. Um, so yeah, we don't see it as really changing the course of our conversations with H C D. It's again, moving the goalpost up in terms of when we adopt, but it doesn't mean that if more changes are, are necessary, um, that we can't make those changes through an amendment and that, which would, like we said, go through its own public process.
They, they, are other cities going through processes very similar to this of having to sort of, you know, not patchwork exactly, but, but many Band-Aid might be the best word to, to, to get it in and then talk about amendments.
A lot of our peers in San Mateo County specifically, um, as you know, we, we collaborate throughout the county on, on housing element policy issues, so yeah, we can tell you that many of our neighbors are doing the exact same thing. Um, this is, you know, an interpretation that came out from H C D., I don't know, a handful of months ago, maybe summer. So I think it's unique to our, to the A BAG region, because, you know, every different region in California had different due dates for their housing element, so. Um, I anticipate that it's not just San Mateo County. It's, like I said, throughout the Bay Area.
Thank you, thanks.
Commissioner, uh, Sai Song, any additional questions?
No, um, like the chair initially said, you know, we've had many meetings on this and, and I think there has been many opportunities for public comment, and I think, you know, what staff put together, you know, based upon all that, I think is very good. Um, and I think, Julia, you said that. Um, and I think Julia, you said that this will be our our first submission, so. This could be sent back, right, for us to do or redo.
They are second.
Oh, this is our second? Oh.
So. Again, tonight. We didn't bring forth to the commission any recommended revisions. We do plan on bringing recommended revisions that reply to HCD's letter to the council. Um, so when, you know, depending on council's action, the next version we submit to HCD will be the second. Um, second version of the draft element that responds to their first round of comments.
Got it.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Lau?
No, I just kind of echo the previous comments and what I stated before greatly greatly appreciate the staff's tremendous amount of work. Yeah, to do this and all the presentations that we've, you know, listened to and that they've prepared. That's a. Just a. It's a lot of work and. I'm greatly appreciated and and. Thanks.
Um, I have one final question on my mind. So we're being asked to self certify. What what would be the situation if it clearly wasn't compliant? Like if there's like then. If the HCD said, you know, they gave you an F. Then would it make any difference if we self certified? And I'm just wondering, does the fact that that we're being asked to recommend this mean that we're basically. We kind of got a passing grade, it's and it's going to go forward with some amendments potentially based on discussions that you have.
Well, it's a little bit of a. Um, you know, in our read of the letter, we didn't find anything in there that. That constituted we perceived as a fatal flaw. They're basically asking for more documentation, more substantial evidence. Not anything in that record in the record from the letter that indicated that there was some fatal flaw with the element. If that were the case, we probably would, you know, looking at a different process forward. But based on the input we've received from them. We didn't believe anything at all. Oh, you know, we're confident that we can work through and provide additional documentation to satisfy their their inquiries or comments or questions. And Julian can may have a want to add to that, but that's kind of my overall view of of what we received.
And is there a final due date or is it just a living document now?
The hundred and twenty. Day grace period puts us to the end of May. To have it uh, certified by HCD. And. And it's it. It's a living document in that it is uh. It's. To be implemented. There's all kinds of programs, policies and programs in there to implement. Over the course of the next eight years, and so it's. Very much a a living document that we're going to be continuing to refer to and have. Zoning amendments, for instance, that will come forward to implement it, so. And. It's a. Definitely something that will not be collecting dust. You know.
And any adopted general plan element can be amended. Um, there's limits. To general plan amendments like in a given calendar year, but. Um. The city is able and. And like we said, we intend, we we anticipate that um. Assuming uh, staff's recommendation moves forward and we do self certify and adopt, that we will be amending that adopted element at least once.
Hmm.
This year.
Great. All right. Thanks very much. Any final questions or observations? Anyone? Hearing none. Um, I think I can ask for a uh. A motion for the planning commission to uh, recommend self certification and adoption of the twenty twenty-three. Twenty thirty-one uh, housing element to city council. Um, I don't know if I need to word it perfectly, but that's kind of. What I could come up with on the spot and. If I may have a motion, please?
So I I I would move to adopt the proposed resolution and its included findings with the proviso that we add language about. Uh, the staff being able to. To negotiate and suggest further amendments to the. Housing element. Based on discussions with HCD.
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you very much. May I have a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Foca?
Aye.
Commissioner Gooding?
Aye.
Commissioner Lau?
Aye.
Commissioner Si-Song?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. The uh, motion passes by four votes to none. Um. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council. Except where specified otherwise. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk not later than fifteen calendar days following the planning commission's decision. Exceptions to the fifteen day filing period include the following. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk within six calendar days of the planning commission's action for use permits and variances and ten calendar days for tentative maps and advertising sign applications. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at four one five five zero eight two one one zero. Um. In that case, uh. I would like to ask staff for any items initiated by them.
Oh, yes, thank you, um, Chair. So the one item I did want to bring up, you'll be getting some correspondence. From the um, city legal council, the forwarding tomorrow regarding um, meeting status. As you know, we've been. Holding uh, remote meetings due to emergency order that the state. Has passed. Um, and sort of modifications of the Brown Act to allow for those. And those rules are being changed. And the, you know, the bottom line is that. Going forward, uh, the next meeting in January and all the meetings in February will be hybrid meetings. Which means that the public can either attend. In person or participate remotely. Uh, there'd be no expectation that the commissioners. Be in attendance or no requirement for the commissioners to be attendance at these. Um, hybrid meetings. You you can attend from city hall if you so choose, but you don't have to. And then starting at the end of February into March, um, the meetings will be fully. Um, this will be hybrid, but the expectation and the direction will be that. Uh, all staff and commissioners and council members would be in attendance in person. And the public can either participate in person or remotely. So anyway, there'll be some uh. Some further guidance or clarification indicating what limited circumstances commissioners could participate remotely. So you'll see that. If you have any questions, obviously, reach out to staff or to uh, legal counsel.
Hmm. So staff will be present in person in uh, starting at the end of the month. Is that right?
Uh, there'll be some staff present for the hybrid meetings, these next meetings in January and February, uh, but then when. The commission is back, you know, in. In live in person, staff will be, you know, in live in person as well unless there's some, again, extenuating circumstances.
Great, thank you. It's been a long time coming. Um, any other items initiated by staff?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Uh, now I'll move on to items initiated by the commission. Anything from? Commissioner Gooding? No, thanks. Si-Song? Commissioner Lau?
No.
All right, so hearing none. Um. I'll ask for a motion. To adjourn.
To the chair, you don't, you don't, you don't need a a motion. You can. Use your prerogative as the chair and adjourn the meeting if you're so inclined.
All right, I'll just ring the bell then. All right. Well, thank you very much and um. We will see you all on the twenty-sixth, I think. Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very great.